Good evening, we're going to welcome to tonight's community town hall meeting on sports safety. I am Aaron McDonald, I'll be moderating tonight. At this time, I'd like to bring to the stage one half of the Foudre combination that brought us here tonight, Mr. JD Foudre.
Thank you, Aaron. I want you to spend a lot of your time because I know you're here for not here to listen to me, you're here to listen to these experts on stage. But I want to thank you everybody for coming tonight. It's a passion of Epic to promote youth sports safety and youth participation, not only in Lafayette region, but around South Louisiana. So for those of you that don't know, Epic is an acronym and it stands for Educating the Community, Protecting Our Athletes, Implementing Effective Policies, and Cultivating Collaborative Relationships. Tonight is the first community of the county that will be hosting. We're hoping to bring people together to youth youth sports where we can keep our athletes safe. So this is going to be an interactive town hall forum. We're going to have multiple ways for you to ask questions. You can go to Facebook, on our Epic Facebook page, submit questions. You have a chance to text in questions to the screen. And then we'll also be walking around with a microphone. Aaron will walk around and get you to ask any questions that you may have for these experts on the stage. So again, thank you for being here tonight. And hopefully we can have some knowledge spread and get some missionaries started. Thank you so much.
Alright, thank you JD. I'd like to start tonight's meeting with a word of prayer and I'd like to bring up the Campus Director for Kyle, Campus Ministries and Chapel for Radio Canyon Football Team, Mr. Eric Trull.
Hey, I don't know about you, but if ever there's a time that you struggle believing that there's a God, you know, I can understand a rainy day, but man, today was gorgeous. And if you don't believe there's a God, something's wrong, okay? I'm sorry. But just fabulous weather and appreciate each and every one of you being here tonight. Let's take one of those, alright? Heavenly Father, we just thank you for your goodness, for your love, for your mercy that you've extended to each and every one of us and to this portion of our country that you bless us in so many different ways. Father, I thank you that we live in a timeframe where we can enjoy sport and that we have men and women that are gathered here tonight who are concerned and serving the athletes in our area. Father, I pray that you will allow wisdom to truly flow. I pray that we will receive and walk away with something that's going to help us in our profession. Father, and through it all, I pray that each and every one of us, each and every day, will look with an opportunity to say thanks, to love you, to praise you for all of the goodness that you poured out to us. Father, it's in Jesus' name we pray, all that we're saying, amen.
Thank you, Mr. Trull. Brief introductions for tonight's presenters. First of all, we'd like to thank a couple of good folks. Katie in Open Channel, this town hall community meeting is being filmed and we've shown multiple times throughout the week, special thanks to those as well. The Louisiana Athletic Trainers Association and our district Big Brother, Sino. And our last sponsor is Game Camp, a local nonprofit that's very involved in youth sports. Now, some brief introductions from your left to right on the stage. Those are our specialists tonight. Dr. Stephanie Autumn from Louisiana Orthopedic and Specials, team physician for University of Louisiana, member of the benefit pool for USA Wrestling, USA Gymnastics, Trampoline, and Tumbling, Dr. Aldrich. Our next guest, Ron Twongay from LMTS Physical Therapy, a guide to our community that desires to see youth sports or is able to enhance the lives of our youth on and off the field towards the future. In the middle, Mr. Scott Arsno, teacher, head athletic trainer at Santa Monica High School and currently the president of Louisiana Athletic Trainers Association. To his left, Mr. Randy Phillipsen, vice president for facilities and management and campus development for Tulane University. Ms. Eunice Mayo was a women's basketball player and graduate of McNeese State University and an area representative for Fellowship of Christian Athletes. And last, the gentleman in front, Mr. Steve Sanford, area director for Southwest Louisiana Fellowship of Christian Athletes and the team chaplain for all athletic teams at McNeese State University. Now, JD will put up a slide, as he said this will be online and interactive. You can text the word sports medicine to 22333 and once you're in, just select A, B, C, D, or E for your area of interest or questions that you might have, and we'll build on those. To get us started, I do have some questions that were pre-returned by our advisory committee. And I will start off and I will ask Dr. Aldrich the first question. Yes, on the stage, there are a couple of mics there, so we can just pass those along. So as it pertains to concussion, Dr. Aldrich, what is the most common question, misunderstanding you receive from parents and athletes regarding concussions?
Probably the most common question that I end up getting from concussed athletes and their parents is, "When do I get to come back? When do I get to participate again?" Well, okay, whatever all your symptoms are, I'll get back to your baseline. Baseline being whatever normal was prior to the concussion. I'm not looking to improve upon the baseline unless there needs to be some improvement anyway. That I'm not looking to improve upon them, I'm just looking to go back to where they were. Back to the one where they rest, academics, and then we start the progression of physical activity too. So it ends up being a process. That always tell them too, that you know, seven to 10 days that you end up breathing in literature and stuff, that that's not necessarily what we end up seeing so much anymore. Especially first time concussion maybe, but it's really got to end up being your first time. The misconception that a lot of them can have is that just because the headaches gone, that they're back to normal. Well, we've got attention, we've got light sensitivity, noise sensitivity, dizziness. We've got all these other symptoms that are neurological, abnormalities, that still are not, their baseline are new things for them. And so sure, it's great that the headache's gone because now you're more comfortable, but there's still other aspects to normal than just the headache. And so a lot of people have gotten away from knowing that being knocked out or losing consciousness is not a requirement for concussion anymore. And so I don't get that question so much anymore. But it does start to, it does show that the education efforts are improving, that actually seeing people that are learning from it. But still, there's a lot of things that are still, there's still, have a lot to learn with it as well.
Alright, thank you, Dr. Aldrich. Alright, looking at our screen here, prepared for competitive season. Mr. Brian, what is the most neglected aspect of preseason preparations of our youth athletes?
I'm not sure I can follow up to that answer like Stephanie. I'm going to do my best to address that question for you. First of all, the blood of the earth, thank you guys for showing up in this event. I think the most neglected aspect of preseason training is to make seem like we're done from it, but the application of making sure that we're preparing the athletes for the specific event that's at hand. I think quite often, there's a misconception or inaccurate assumption that just because we're training hard and conditioning and sweating, that we're preparing our body for the movements that we're about to participate in without having the season. Football looks a lot different than basketball, which looks a lot different than volleyball, which looks a lot different than baseball, which looks a lot different than swimming. But unfortunately, many of the preseason programs that are applied today, if you walk in on these events, they look a lot alike. And if you were to ask the human body, hey, is this what you feel like when you participated in this particular event? Are we mimicking that in your preseason training and conditioning program? Unfortunately, all too often, the answer is no. And in my world, we see the athletes on the opposite side. The athletes who are unable to be successful in that particular event because of sport ribbon, I'm sorry, because of injury or inappropriate mechanics. So I do think that preseason program can be difficult to correctly, a huge performance enhancement. And I do think that we have a big gap that we can close from what's currently being presented and understood and accepted as opposed to a different approach that can really prepare our athletes, our humans, many a physical inspiration for their ultimate performance.
Thank you, sir. Our next question is, if we can get the mic to Mr. Phillipsen. On the southern part of the ITC corridor, we have athletic complexes popping up right and left for the various sports. What should be the first question parents ask when participating at a new facility?
Well, just a hedo, thank you for having me, it's always fun to come to Lafayette. Don't get here often enough. But when going into a new facility, one of the most important questions to ask is for an emergency action plan. If they don't have one, that's a great concern. They should be able to give you their plan in case of a fire, their plan for first aid responses. Will they have ambulances on site? Will they have some sort of medical personnel? Are there AEDs on sites? Are there fire extinguishers on site? Those types of things that in the event that something happened, because we never planned for an emergency, right? We never expected. We need to have a plan, so fail, win, to plan, plan to fail. So just asking for those simple things, the things that you would think about if something happened. High school state championships, several years ago when I was at the Dome, we had a gentleman that had a heart attack. We ended up having our field people, ambulance folks, go in and responding because they were quicker than the ones in the stands. Knowing what their plan of attack is for any scenario, not just for the athletes on the field, but also for the people in the stands is just as important as your entry into the facility.
Thank you, sir. Pass the mic there to your left, I have a question for Mr. Sanford and Ms. Mayo. Can you provide one positive example of where the spiritual development of an athlete drove success on the playing field?
They all like to also say thank you, we appreciate it so much to be a part of the HSC program. So I appreciate those that are down to you for being here. Eunice and I and the White Nation are over with us, are excited about this and be able to share a little bit about where FCA plays a part in the development of athletes. And I'll share the answer to my question to the story of one of our athletes that came to us. She is an athlete, softball coach at McNeese. She came to McNeese, she was a softball player from the high school in Texas. Her desire was to go to Vegas and play softball. So in her junior year, she went to a softball camp there. She did not have any background in the church, but she knew that at night they have a little chapel and the head coach is the one that conducted it. So in her mind, she felt like, well, if I show up, then I might have a good chance to get a scholarship to Vegas. She said, "I never had a Bible," and she said she knew the Giddens for the Bible in the forest. And she picked up a Giddens Bible, went to chapel every night and saw football. Thinking that last night, they made a call for her people to put their faith in Christ, and she did that. She left, she went home. About a month later, she got the letter and said, "We're not going to add a scholarship to Vegas." She was disenchanted, obviously, by not getting the scholarship, but she also was a little bit disenchanted about her relationship with Christ because she thought that that would get her in good standing. So she went there, received her year of play, and she was offered a scholarship at McNeese State. She came and she was on the softball team there. We began FCA and involved. She came because I think we had hot dogs the first night and she needed something to practice. But as Danny came, Danny began to grow in her relationship with Christ because FCA is a safe place. It's not someplace where we're going to, we're going to challenge them, but at the same time, we're going to give people an opportunity to ask questions, to grow in their faith. At the end of four years, Danny's asking the question of, "What can you do to pursue a seminary degree" after she gets her masters? Well, in her junior year, her A.D. had gone to Vegas for a girls' basketball game. The athletic director had given him a pamphlet for truth seminary that said, "We're just beginning at Vegas." He said, "Take this back. If any of your athletes ever interested, you'll have it." Well, Tommy came back and gave it to me, I put it in my drawer. Fast forward a year and a half, Danny says, "I'm interested." And so I said, "Look, Tommy brought this back, look at it, take it." She went to seminary, and she went over there and she was accepted, ended up getting a three-year scholarship, fully paid, to a seminary, and graduated with a degree in sports chaplaincy. Today, when Danny started an athletic career, she was a transactional athlete. She was only concerned with winning, losing, how my game went, batting average, fielding average. That was all she was concerned about. Today, she is a transformational coach. She is concerned with the well-being of the athlete. How is this going to translate into how kind of woman you're going to be, or wife you're going to be? How you're going to raise the kids, and the lessons you're learning are being transformed? And in the process of that, she has an opportunity to share with that relationship with Christ and how that blends in with competitive son athletes. So we've never seen Danny's life change. And you can, I'm sure Eric can give multiple testimonies, to how that just happens as an athlete becomes a part and their spiritual development grows. We see them years later, that they're in that life, so that's the answer to that question. So I'll pass this to you, and I'll let you get the next question first.
Same question, Ms. Mayo. Can you provide us with a positive example of where the spiritual development of an athlete drove to them having success in the playing field?
Well, Big A, I can tell you this, I can tell you about the impact that it's made at FCA in Southwest Louisiana. Is that good?
Sure.
Oh, thank you, Big A. Big A was an athletic trainer when I was at McNeese State University. JD, Big A, thank you guys for having me here today. I was exposed to FCA when I attended McNeese State. I did play basketball there. And that's when I met Mr. Steve. And now I have the awesome privilege and opportunity to work with the Fellowship of Christian Athletes. I'm the high school area resident in Southwest Louisiana. So I can tell you that FCA is making a huge, huge impact in the area. And I wrote down four major components. The first is connection. What I do is, I go into these high schools and I connect with the principals. I connect with the coaches. We introduce FCA. FCA is not an intrusive ministry, but we introduce it to them and say, "Look, this is what it is, and we want your athletes to be involved." So first, connection. And we've made connection with 40-plus schools in Southwest Louisiana, so we're doing great in that space. The second link is knowledge. We give them information about FCA. We tell them the vision of FCA, which is to see the world transformed by Jesus Christ through the influence of coaches and athletes. So we give them that vision, we provide them with the knowledge of what FCA is all about to try to get their athletes and their coaches involved. The next link is visibility. I am everywhere, on whatever campus, whatever they need, I provide support for these coaches. We provide leadership training, we conduct meetings. If they want us to come in and actually do their FCA meetings, to get them started, to get the club started, we actually do that. I also lead meetings, devotions. I'm there on McNeese State University campus as well, doing devotions in team locker rooms before the games. They allow us to come in, do a quick devotion and prayer for men's games, women's games. So that's a blessing. Also, support is the last thing. We provide resources, bibles, whatever they need and what we get to FCA. We'll point on the campus, we provide that. Also, we do some different things. I think you have the mic. Thank you, Mrs. Steve. Come on, Mrs. Steve. Mrs. Steve, walk it up, okay? Okay, let me let y'all know some stats. As far as Fields of Faith, we do that, we present that to the schools, and they actually put on this event. Fields of Faith is a student-led worship event. And we had 12 Fields of Faith events. We had 3,500 students reach through that. Parents, everybody come out, they gather on the football field, students give their testimony, there's worship, bringing them. We also do a Night of Champions. I'm in Lake Charles. Held at the beginning of each school year, where over 1,000 athletes and coaches attend for an evening of inspiration, motivation. We have a guest speaker, we have worship, and we're able to minister to these athletes if they need it one-on-one after the event is over. We also do the Kyle Bruce Award Scholarship for students. We give out four of those because we partner with a group called Profit and Loss, a Christian business organization in Lake Charles. We also get a chance to pray before state championship games. I just did that. We had the boys' state basketball championship games held at Heard Palisade in Lake Charles, and I had to pray before every game, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, we prayed before every game. So we're excited that the LHSAA gives us an opportunity to go in there and at least say a prayer before these athletes step on the court. So that's exciting. So FCA is making a huge impact. We are going to continue to expand the ministry. We're trying to expand ourselves in Lafayette area. We do not have a representative in Lafayette. I am starting to come cover some schools in Lafayette, and we're praying for that person to come on staff. Anybody else want to come on staff? Right here. Anybody? Because let me tell you, half of this ministry, half of it is raising the funding. So we're a faith funding ministry, so that's the fun part. We do the ministry, but if you're on staff, you do raise the funding in order to do the ministry of FCA. So I'm a missionary to the schools, pray for me. Okay? But we are making an impact, and it's moving in Southwest Louisiana, and we'll continue to do what we have to do in order to expose more coaches and athletes to Jesus Christ.
Thank you, Eunice. Mr. Arsno, you can have one of the mics, please. The South Financial Resources, what is the biggest barrier to having an athletic trainer in youth sports? And how would you recommend addressing it?
Always wanted a new view, you had. And I really found out, like, I feel like I'm misconstruing, I don't think that...
You consider a safe and bright light on you, sir.
You know, there's often, as we travel, we, I'll share this with you. When I started in 1995 in my current job, there was, not very many, there were seven teacher athletic trainers in the state of Louisiana. We had to look at the state association, see if the obstacles were there. Obviously, it was always at cost, having people that were qualified, certified teachers. So the LATA has been very active to try to figure ways that we can better serve our profession and give them into places in the high school setting. I'm very proud to tell you that I opened work with a lot of individuals in the state tackling that process in the high school setting. Just recently, a March night, the Atlas Project was by the Sports Federation Institute in LATA, published for the first time, the first time that we ever collected that data, that we have more full-time athletic trainers in the state of Louisiana now than we do schools that, more schools have full-time athletic training than schools that actually do not. And so we're actually at the national average of 66% of the schools in our state now have athletic training. So it was done by looking at what those obstacles were. But the number one obstacle, I always feel, is people to understand because they will give you excuses of why they shouldn't have asked. I believe that we have an inherent responsibility to our student athletes, to our youth programs, to provide the best and possible care to inappropriate healthcare people in them. A lot of times, people will give excuses about why. It should be our number one priority. I can go into many school board offices or school board meetings, and in every school, every school that comes, they're going to tell you their number one priority is blood. Students save. And we go anywhere, and that's some people that said, "It's hard to put out, I don't know about this." And so the obstacle really is convincing people to understand that we have that responsibility and inspire those people that affect that change and that have the position to make those decisions, do that. In the school systems, we attacked the center goal from the bottom up. We started doing super attendance. It's convincing them and educating them. And once that part happened, it amazed what happened for us as a professional in the secondary school setting. I'm very proud to tell you that one of the things we've initiated as the LATA and the overall running, we recognize the school system that have done that. So now we've got injury into the youth sports market. And I'll tell you some few things that have come up. One is that I have walked to present, there's a youth sports organization in Baton Rouge called Baton Rouge Soccer Association, soccer club. They employ ice football at that trade. When you go to their website, you can see the APs. They have a weather system, they have policies and procedures that are put in place. And the reason I know that, because as a parent, that was the first thing I looked at when my daughter was going to be a part of it. And I understood that what they're providing, so we have to look at the people that are doing it right and put them on that pedestal and encourage them, let them continue to do that. Because that's the only way that we're going to listen to this change. Because youth sports is a growing market, and to be honest with you, listening to statistics that any of these people can give is a potential injury. The point of emphasis is always when they start, whether it's mechanics, whether it's concussion, education, whether it's faith, whether it's facilities. It doesn't matter. It all starts. Facilities break down. There's destinations, parks. I mean, you walk around in our little community, just hurt every field. So you're going to tell them that you can spend $1.5 million for facilities, but we can't find $42,000, $50,000, and we could ignore the outreach of that trade. It's just all bother. And so it's really a culture shift. It's really cultural education and culture events like this. To be able to have people that are advocates, not only as athletic trainers, but as parents, to say, "Hey, you know what? I think it's a responsibility that this is provided." And it should be, and it is. And so that's the hurdles. Sometimes we put obstacles, but they're not really there. It's really an understanding, and it's a priority. That's really where it comes down to. And then, you know, when you go on a school system, you say, "Do you have an A providing responsibility to protect your student athletes?" Because the school day in a high school or any school does not start, it starts at seven or whatever it is that lets up, but athletics goes on. And so that was important, and we have to make people understand. Another mission that I think is really neat that's coming out, and I'll be showing just after my district meeting, but it's connecting the appropriate healthcare people with youth hard education. And I think there's some really neat missions that are coming out. Most of them are in advocacy, but I think that's the growth that you're missing. So from an aspect, I think it's education area. I think it's education. I think it's coaching parents, asking those questions to the people that are the decision makers, the people that are running these programs. Because let me tell you something. Youth sports is a billion, over multi-good knowledge. There is not an excuse to say, "Hey, you know what? If your body rains, and you've got seven different uniforms, and you've got a $200 bat, and you're telling me that we cannot add costs to make sure that we have the appropriate people to take care of our kids?" And I just don't get the point. I think that's where it has to go. That's kind of...
Thank you, Scott. I know our board's updating, but going back to the previous update, Dr. Aldrich can have the microphone. What is your response to parents that are concerned about long-term health consequences? CTE, for example, from sports participation?
So whenever it comes to CTE in the long-term sports, that really any conference that I go to, whether it's the sports neurology, primary care sports press, and anything where they have a little segment to talk about CTE, it's one segment, person stands up and goes, "Well, we really don't know." So CTE, that we know that certain plaques, tau plaques are accumulated, that we know that there is a link to some collision sports, but this is found in NFL old-school NFL football players that have other habits to go along with it as well. And so if you look at the studies and what comes out, it's a biased population that's being studied. It's not the general population that's being studied. It's not just the youth sport athlete that didn't make it past, you know, seventh, eighth grade football and soccer because they lost interest, not because of anything else, because they lost interest. You don't know what their brain looks like if they ended up having any tau plaques accumulated. That some are thinking that there is a genetic component to go along with it, that somewhere in our genes that we are going to be more destined to, not just a genetic but maybe to accumulate more tau plaques. That there's still so much research that needs to be done across this because there's research being done to see if there's different enzymes that are accumulated by others, by genetics, in order to eliminate those tau plaques. You know, so some that we really don't know, and that's the simple answer with it. Now, what I will tell them when they're concerned about that is, let's look at your child now and let's, how about we protect them by their technique, their protective equipment? Is a collision sport actually something they should be participating in? You know, if they are a very small seventh grader and stuff, that they're on that lower 10th grade or the grade scale and stuff, they don't need to be playing full collision football with the bigger seventh, eighth graders that look like they should be in high school. Then that's that mismatch, and so then that ends up putting them in additional danger because their body hasn't grown enough for them to be able to protect themselves. Then for some too, that making sure their appropriate protective equipment, are they utilizing the helmets or how about, does their helmet fit appropriately, implanted appropriately? And are they using technique where that helmet isn't their first point of contact? You know, are they utilizing appropriate technique and not going for it the way that they saw them do it on the NFL on Sunday and stuff, not going in for the kills? So I try to bring it back to, let's educate about what concussions are, what symptoms we're looking for. Let's do what we can to in order to prevent the concussions by appropriate technique, protective equipment and all of that too. Let's make sure that we can recognize if they do end up having a head injury and that we don't just minimize that of, "Oh, tough enough, okay, come on, you need to get back out there." And then whenever we do recognize that there is a concussion, that we handle it appropriately, that you get it to the appropriate medical providers, that it's not something for your going off of "Come on, block or something else, and this is the way that they told me it needs to be handled." No, actually get it to somebody that's not the experience with it too. And making sure that we work on those things is going to be the way that we end up trying to prevent the CTE cases in the future. Because we're not going to know the results of all the efforts that we're putting in right now until these kids become adults and then they pass, and we have their brains to look at too. And so it's something that we just do the best we can. And so it's something that we just do the best we can to prevent the measures that we can at this point, while more the rest of the research unfolds. But know that the research that you do end up seeing is biased, that it's not looking at the normal brains. I should donate my brain. I've had two head injuries, no real heavy alcohol use, no drug use at all or anything, and genetics seem kind of, okay, little bit of Alzheimer's in the family. So I would be interested to see how many tau plaques I have based upon my history and stuff too. Unless we start seeing more of the general population knowing more the histories, then I think we'll be able to have a more reasonable approach to what CTE is and not the scare tactics and the terrifying things that we hear right now. My cue says.
Thank you, Dr. Albert. All right. Communities from you, the public, just show of hands, you can come up here, ask the question. If you won't stand up, speak, or I can bring you the mic. Any questions? Don't be bashful, we're just on Facebook club. Any? Do we have any other questions that we can bring up, JD? Okay, all right, well, I can go back to this group of questions. This is for Brian. Can you address the seriousness of sports specialization and how it may impact preseason training?
Can I get some info from Scotty if I need to?
Of course.
So to repeat the question, the impact of sports specialization?
The seriousness of it now and how it affects preseason training.
I'd like to tell the story kind of comparable to NASCAR. If I drove my car every morning and I left my house and I turned left, and went a little bit further, and I turned left, and went a little bit further, and I turned left, if I take a look at my tires after turning left, I have some significant wear and tear on one side of my vehicle and one side of my tire compared to the other side. So if I take little Johnny at the age of eight and we decide that he's going to be a major baseball MVP, and so we start playing baseball in February, we're going to play baseball in January, we play baseball year-round, and all we do is baseball, 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 little Johnny's going to have trouble with baseball down the line, rotator cuff, his trunk, his SI joints, his posture, we're going to start to see some of those turning left symptoms. So I think it's extremely important that we develop our athletes. Hope is definitely pointed intended to make sure that we get from all areas, mental, physically, exploration, and to make sure that we're also developing the right side as well as the left side. We're developing the ability to jump, we're developing the ability to throw, we're developing the ability to catch and run, especially now with a lot of recent studies that have shown some of the top track picks in baseball, football, basketball, some of the most recent MVPs in the biggest stage, the biggest stage, these guys are all multi-purpose athletes. So I think there's a bit of a con going on with the need to specialize, there's a lot of fundraising associated with that. So I think it's important that we recognize that, we bring it to the forefront, educate the parents, and all, the need to play different sports, to do different things and not just focus too soon on one particular sport.
Thank you, sir. This next question, we get Mr. Phillips in the mic. What responsibility does the league or the facility have to provide a safe environment for all participants? Can you repeat the question?
Yes, sir.
What responsibility does the league or facility have to provide a safe environment for all participants?
So obviously, there is a level of responsibility that the leagues and the facilities all take on, whether it's through insurance requirements or meeting the state codes or whatever it may be, the different municipalities. There is an obligation that facility operators should feel when taking on these events. So as we spoke about earlier, excuse me, keep in mind the safety of not just the participants on the field, which is automatically one-on-one, the first thing you think you look at. Need to make sure that you have the appropriate level of coverage for what's going on. Obviously, we're going to have a different level of coverage depending on the sport that's being played. If there's a football game and you don't have an ambulance at that site, you're being irresponsible, in my opinion. And so in my experience at the Superdome, we've automatically had one unit dedicated just to the field of play. Period had a sentence, but that unit was hardly available. Because depending on what was going on, we would pull one from somewhere else or pull one from the street. You also have an obligation to the spectators to make sure that there is the appropriate safety levels there. That may mean first aid, that may mean ALX, it all depends on what it is. You really should be consulting with your natural professional, whoever that may be, whether it's somebody within the league, somebody that you rely on for information. The other thing that I will tell you is that regardless of the type of facility that you were in, whether it's an athletics facility, a school, a church, a classroom, whatever it is, there is, there are responsibilities that facility operators have. The thing for me right now, as somebody who oversees facilities in Tulane, maybe before that, the Superdome and the Arena in New Orleans, AVs. AVs are becoming not so much a luxury, but a necessity, and especially with what's on the market today, where it's basically be operated by a child. The ones that we're getting in Tulane right now, you can actually have multiple languages that speak to you, and it won't work if it's not a cardiac event. Those sorts of things are starting to become the basis, the absolute basis. So there are absolutely responsibilities on the part of the facility in addition to the league. The league will often tell you, well, no one's the responsibility of the facility, but they both have culpability. When the lawsuits come, they're both going to get sued anyway, so everybody should take care of it.
All right, thank you, sir. We do have a question up on the board, and we have our guests on the stage, probably multiple people can speak on it, but regarding return to play and return to learn, you touched on appropriate progression and when to move on or stop the progression. Dr. Albert, you want to go first for me?
For the return to play, return to learn, actually, I'm finding that that is even more complex than return to play anymore. It makes such a bigger, it can end up really slowing down the process anyway. We won't have the, if we don't have the teachers on board, whatever comes down to return to learn, it can take forever and they may emerge and get back. So as far as return to learn, that I typically try not to take them out of school altogether, that trying to get the accommodations in place with rest breaks, that way if they're performing in the classroom, they can step out in the hallway where it's a little bit calmer, and they can try to keep the pressure a little bit and then go back in. That trying to limit different stimulations as far as computers, promethium boards, having pre-printed notes, tutoring, seeing if they can just sit in class and listen and just be present. The concussion can be isolating the type of injury because they can't do any physical activity, they can't be around the team, and then you get them to take them out of the classroom and then they're sitting at home by themselves, and then they just end up getting depressed or anxious trying to go back into everything. So I do try to keep them in some aspect of the classroom, but trying to, trying to make sure that the kids can verbalize their names. It hurts whenever I look at the computer screen or this time, I need to have some help, try to find something else to do with that. And making sure that they end up, can end up having that discussion with their teachers and counselors. Then I don't always feel as though a permanent or even temporary five oh four necessarily has to be necessary, that if some temporary accommodations can be made from a week or whatnot without having to force all that additional paperwork, that it can be beneficial for everybody in the long, but sometimes there's teachers that just aren't going to cooperate with that, or they don't feel like concussion's real or whatnot with it. So trying to allow for either late starts, early dismissals, that way they're there at least for some of the day. If they have to go to half-days, then, okay, then alternating those days with it, changing the way that their classes may be presented to them, than more paper, than anything on the computer, or even having oral texts. And so on my letter, on my little excuse for those students and stuff, that it's got these as different options, but also I want the teachers and counselors, in order to have them ready to find what else maybe I can think of, that they're able to do that, and it's all about trying to make it the easiest way possible. If their symptoms are getting worse, if they are basically having to take medicine during the day, if it's counterproductive for them to be at the school at all or anything, then that's one of our little problems about the status or the school excuse for them. And so it just kind of depends upon their symptoms too, that I want to push a little bit within our realm of comfort. It all really kind of depends upon what type of concussion they have and what some of their symptoms are. If a lot of their symptoms are anxiety-based and not true concussion, then I have to push a little bit further. And we end up having to have more of a conversation with counselors and teachers too. Also with that letter too, I also have my email address on it, so that way they can contact me directly. I get to have a teacher or counselor contact me directly with any questions or anything to go along with it, but I still encourage it so that way we can try to help the student get back the fastest and easiest way possible for them. So it's trying to operate within that central threshold and trying to find what pathways they can do well with, and then avoid the ones that they can't until they're able to do more with it. So trying to keep it as cool as possible.
Thank you, ma'am. I'd like the mic to be passed to Scott, and I'll, before he speaks, as a full-time athletic trainer in a single school setting for many years, before I moved to the principal's office, that was always an obstacle at times, getting a teacher buy-in, modifying the day, the different things, one still apparently practicing in a one-school setting. Scott, can you share with us how you approach an athlete or any athlete with any injury? How they go about their day outside the athletic hour?
Sure. Thing I think is very important is I, is giving all your team members, all you, now we have great school leaders, our four facilitators, our counselors office, now we have a great public high school. It's a very big school, but it's, we have a great culture about sports safety, student safety, about just the whole community development. And so by doing that, this makes this process better, this is that, because now you have more people, not only just the parents that have that trainer, right, that are watching and helping and modifying, you have their teacher that's seeing it, that the counselors are making those changes, because then you have other, these other providers that in the sense of, that's in your school system, you know, the youth counselors that are able to, or even see certain changes. And so it's really important. And so return to learn comes about buying, it comes about educating people, because I have a great team physician that's willing to come in and make sure that your administrators understand that. And so that's very important, and you have to have these conversations before the fact that this happens, because it's very difficult. I don't see where, it's very difficult when a student will have some type of concussion then, especially with a state testing, or a pitch, or testing, because you want to give them an opportunity to succeed too. So these, all these things have to be put in place. So obviously, the number one thing, and you really touched on, is having that buy-in, is having that, that athletic trainer has to be there first. I think that's the one thing that allows it to happen. Now, unfortunately, I have multiple athletic trainers on campus, now I have a teacher athletic trainer, but it gives us more opportunity for someone to come to and say, hey, look, I don't really think he's doing good. And I think that's where a lot of this comes from. So education, buy-in, I think are the four things, because it takes time. And I definitely agree with my father that those kids being at home and being isolated, it doesn't help them as much. And so we have kind of a different plan to give back the kids. We look at what their hardest classes are going to be, you know, we have a lot of people-based learning that we do, we try a lot on that, but like I said, it's trying those things to do, because at the end of the day, we want to help them. Because if they had a sprained ankle or torn ACL, you know, we're going to make sure they have a wheelchair in the classroom. This is so different. So we have to make sure that we're finding ways to modulate it, to help them, give them the best results in return. So I think that's the, you know, they would step, to give them a steady center, which will be out there for them.
And it's something with those schools that don't have the athletic trainers, that it's so hard to manage a concussion and return to learn there, that really it's, it makes my jobs easier from the, from seeing how their progression goes, and also for the athlete too, whenever they've got that athletic trainer in place and that plan in place. So can't deal with it without, y'all, it's super hard.
All right, our next question on the board. Regarding risk management, if a player is allowed to return to play against the recommendation of a healthcare professional, athletic trainer, physician, anybody want to address that? We have physical therapist, athletic trainer, doctor. Regarding risk management, a player is allowed to return to play, we're dealing with, I guess in the youth setting, that a student athlete under the age of eighteen, mom, dad, risk them to return to play, although there might be care on the sideline, there might be notification from a doctor or a healthcare provider seeing them in office, but mom, dad insists they won't play, their son or daughter won't play, how do we handle that situation? All right, why don't you speak up at once? I'll take it.
Oh, we're going to cough and sore at the same time. This is always, this is a very difficult situation. This is one reason why I think having appropriate people available to the youth sports organizations are vital, documentation and understanding in this person, in Allen County, sort of getting appropriate healthcare provider. So often, now we have a middle school program, and we have athletic trainers that work in our middle schools, but so often that we'll see or you hear these stories about some like, well, their mom said they can do it. So I hear that more at the soccer field, and then, you know, that they okay you to do it, or that they got someone else to okay you to do it. I think this is a very dangerous process. You know, and I think often, people are trying to go the path of least resistance, but even in physicians that are trained, I think you lose a lot of objectivity in your own care. And if you try to, even then, and you know, we're in environments sometimes in the average area, that certain schools have tons of healthcare providers, but I don't know if dermatologists need to be making a return to play decision on a concussion, right? Or even in certain situations, but once again, it comes back to that, having strong advocates within the medical community to be able to say, hey, look, you know, we want to make these decisions, at least when it has to happen. I would never allow kids to come back and return that if they have some type of, we have a basic policy in place, even if kids have a car accident. And now, why is that? That was born out of the fact that when you're sitting, you're glad that you're sitting in that position, a kid that no longer plays for, that kid, that you're sitting there, that you're glad that's the reason that you were there, because you advocated for him, that he wasn't well, and that no matter who's clearly, that he's not, I don't think this is the best situation for him. You know, there's a, there'll never be a play that, and we got to remember that. It's there, you know, this is what's through profile set, basically, a gentleman that's been a huge advocate for me in the community, a guy named Vanley, who was college athlete. But you know, he was a principal in football, and he came to me one day and said, remember this one, and this was probably his second year. He said, the parts that they have now, the parts they're going to have now. And so if you don't do a very good job of protecting them, and other people tell them to put them out, and you're not doing what's best for them, that you're missing a part of your job. And I think sometimes we forget about that. I have a neighbor in the office, there was a musical athlete, and his parents sitting there, seeing all of our athletic trainers we trained with, just playing youth baseball, Pat Jones, actually, where his dad just led up Kenny Play. Because Kenny Play, we need that, Roger, or Toreko, Kenny Play, they had this big tournament, they paid all this money to do, but Kenny Play can get something special to win. You know, at that point, it really concerns us that, you know what, he's going to play fifty-seven more baseball games this summer. Can we just wait for them to heal up? Because in that mom, the next mom, and then the next mom, and then, you know, by the time they get to me in high school, their bodies are broken, and then doing their life goes on too. And I see that all the time. And you know, the scary thing is, and I want y'all, everybody to remember, is that before those kids get to high school, and most of their experiences in youth sports and travel ball and club ball and all that, people are really truly making those decisions for them, just mom and dad. And you have to put yourself to sit back and say, am I making the best decision for a kid? Do I have the right information to make? Is I, am I getting that information from the hand to, then you're out of the road, and saying, well, maybe he won't be okay, or am I going to appropriate people to make that decision? And it's scary, because you know, when you see that, and you know, I've told too many kids and saw too many kids have to stop later because of the injuries that they've incurred that happened waiting for high school, or that condition that was set on the path, waiting for them to get to me. The path of, there's a lot of throwing injuries, the path of a lot of concussion issues that we're talking about, it's all hung around there. And that's where parents have to, you know, we have to be involved, and have to start asking those questions. If I can afford, if my community can afford the passive mom ability to build a If I can afford, if my community can afford the pass a bond, ability to re-renew the opportunity, do I have the proper people that would be there to manage it or offer to, to save our children? Because that's what we offer. That's all that follows up here. We're advocates. We're advocates and we, for some reason, something happened and we love to sit there and say, man, we've never been in our situation.
That's not true. Thank you, sir. Anybody want to add to that? Can we go on to the next question?
I'd just like to recognize JD Stubb for putting this event together because this is the initial push to get a ball room so that you have an authority in a community that their bottom line is only protecting our youth. And all these questions go back to that. If you've got a team or a parent willing to make a decision to get their young athlete back into a game or a sport prematurely, but that young athlete plays at a league that recognizes you safely, plays for a coach that recognizes you safely, plays in a community that recognizes you safely, that goes back to the mission of JD's training with this and ultimately are protecting our youth. And having a team together that can be recognized as an authority whose mission is to protect our youth, to educate our parents so that they can make the best decision, and also surround them with people in leagues and teams of sports to aid them in making that ultimate decision for their, for their athletic journey.
Thank you, Brad. Mr. Samper, Ms. Mayo spoke earlier, the different things that are going on in the southwest of Louisiana, chapter of the college of Chris Nathalie. Can you pinpoint or name that one biggest impact that that chapter has had on, in that area?
Well, I think the biggest impact would come with the culmination of all the events that FCA is blessed to be able to put on and to be able to, because in every community we're talking about the spiritual role for the young person, combined with the competitive nature of the college, the less than we know. So I believe that when we talk about the influence, influence is not going to be any one event, it's going to be a combination, beginning with the host, sponsoring the school, the coach that's having an influence every day, because the coaches are all the biggest influencers. We may put the big event on, but the coaches work every day with the football player, the baseball player, volleyball player, soccer player. They're on the field, they're in the locker room, they're on the bus, they're in the pre-game, they're halftime. And so the biggest influence that I can say that FCA has had, you know, with local coaches, helping them understand the awesome opportunity they have and the impact and influence on the young people that they coach. Billy Graham said, and we're all focused on Billy Graham, that a coach should influence one more athletes in one season than most people will in their lifetime. And so when you look at the influence of a coach, that's the greatest impact we could have is to work with the coaches and give them the opportunity to influence their youth.
Thank you, Mr. Samper. That wraps up this portion of the program. I want to thank all the guests on the stage. We do have one more question on my call. Sorry about that. In regards to the newly developed blood testing for concussions, how when will this be integrated into the evaluation of concussions in our area? I'll read that again on the panel on the stage. In regards to the newly developed blood testing for concussion, how when will this be integrated into the evaluation of concussions in our area?
So that new blood test, that's not going to be integrated into the management of concussion, sports-related concussion, any of that that we think of, that we deal with, that we're thinking of athletes or anything else. That new blood test is done, it's supposed to be done in the emergency room setting in order to see if a CT scan is necessary because there is a brain bleed. That's the purpose of that new blood test. It's not in order to, it's not for sideline management and can you go or no go. That's not it. That it's one to know if this person has something that actually has a traumatic brain injury, has a brain injury, has a brain bleed, that we need to end up looking for more of a structural injury than anything else. So that's not anything that we're going to end up implementing on the sideline, in the athletic training room, in the clinic and everything for concussion management at all. This is a, are they going to die or not? You know, do I need to get a neurosurgeon or do I need to keep them overnight in the ICU? What do I need to do with this? And do I need to get them to another facility and stuff for further management? This is not anything that we're going to end up using at all. So that's, there's a similar test that we use in the ER in medicine to see about blood clots, about pulmonary embolism, and that's the big blood clot that goes to the lung. If we get a patient that comes through the ER that ends up having the signs, symptoms, and other thoughts of having a pulmonary embolism, but we don't know if we want to put them through the radiation of the CT scan, then we do a blood test called a D-divert. D-divert is worthless. If it's negative, they don't have a blood clot. If it's positive, they can have a bunch of other things, but you are obligated to do a CT scan and definitely to rule out your blood clot there. That's the same way this blood test is going to be used. If it's negative in the ER, they're probably, they aren't going to have a brain bleed, so therefore they don't need the CT scan in their head. But if it's positive, they probably do, they need the CT scan and they're going to need further workup, monitoring and stuff to go along with that. So from an athletic standpoint, for us, everyday folk is worthless. Sorry, I don't mean to crush trees there, but the hard truth is, don't put in socket in it.
Thank you. Anyone else on panel want to add to that? All right, last question. If an athlete has a biomechanical issue with their sport, what is the best approach to try to fix that in the high school and college setting?
Biomechanical issue. So I guess the very short answer is it depends. But specifically to give a very applicable answer is some form of assessment needs to take place so that we can understand where this movement and the amount is coming from. Again, like we touched on earlier, specific to the athlete, specific to their school, the demands of their school and their role inside of this world. So if I have an offensive tackle, which shows the problems compared to an open thrower, which shows the problems, my assessment is going to probably look and feel different for both of those guys depending upon the task that they need to perform. Obviously, that assessment can be performed by any trained professional who understands human movement and mechanics. And in front there, we're going to recognize some form of deficit. I believe that once the deficit is recognized, we have to have a complete understanding of what, what right goes forth. Independent and individual, not as opposed to a gross, normal protocol, this guy's recognition is having shoulder instability. So flip to the book for page 243 of Shoulder Inseminum and follow all the steps for this guy. We need to make sure that we're very individualized and specific to him. And then just fill that gap, fill that deficit of where they are in their movement and their needs to where they need to be in order to be successful. I strongly recommend that once we get past that point of success, just give that athlete with the buffer. Just allow them to have more range of motion, more strength, more endurance, more perseverance so that they can get back into their performance and be successful, as successful if not great compared to the recognition of the deficit from the beginning.
Mr. Arsenal, looks like you have something to say.
Yeah, my dad's, I agree with Brian. I think that the new emergency protocol, first play, sports science, these parts are critical because often I think athletes are trained for people. It's not a cookbook, you know, we have a lot of basketball programs. We have to look at that individual and I think for so long we've missed that and we try to just kind of do this group thing. And sometimes, and I'll share this with you, and I learned and why I think this is so important, you know, we do functional movement screens, we did that for a while, and we really been good at this. And Brian talked about training preseason, he talked about a lot of alternatives. One thing about all, would you agree that all of these programs should be prevention things too? Is that we're increasing performance but decreasing injury. In my first year as a new 24-year-old athletic trainer at a teen small training, at a training facility, that, you know, we were very big in our school at the time, a part of it. And, you know, after that first football season where I had 120 time-was injuries, seven ACLs, you know, we really realized that, you know, you're loading up people that are not ready for that and we're training people in a way that are specific. We're a SWAT, BIMs, deadlift, but we're not, you know, we're not training them to be an athlete. And we're not looking at a specific event that they're going to do. And so now there's a lot of great science. And that's one thing too, we have to have a science base. You know, I talked about anti-punitive. Anti-punitive is that anecdotal stuff. That's that person that tells you to leave that big, strong area openly, sticks to your sheets at night instead of cutting, right? And doing your so-called Epsom salts and all the other things that they tell you to do then. But it's looking at science and looking at research studies and that's pretty important. And I think as the older I got and to understand that there's a better way and why do you do it that way, that there's better ways to do that. And once again, it goes back to asking a question, who is the best person I can get? The most appropriate person I need for this? And I can tell you, one thing, you know, I live, I'm from Brent and I'm from this area, but I've lived my adult life in bench breaks and working at Central High School. But I want to tell you this, you know, we have different ranges in our state. And some of the most hot, talented people in our profession and most innovative people come out of this area, whether it's with concussions, whether it's the science, whether it's in the sports, safety, comes from here. So I think that came to get to me, that's a great opportunity because you have a lot of people that are really on the front edge in a lot of things. They're not waiting to see what somebody else is doing. So if you get back to the question, I think we have to look at that individual. There's a space that says that before we start to train them and then that we can develop a terminal investment when you do train them. And so they're going to be a lot safer, they're going to be a lot more injury resistant and a full facility.
All right, thank you, Brian and Scott. Audience, how about a round of applause for all of our guests. If I could, stage guest, if I could have you move to the proper row here, some of you. I'd like to bring up all the athletic trainers in the audience and those that are on stage. Up onto the stage, marches National Athletic Trainer Month and we'd like to recognize Quite a few in attendance, see some of our executive officers from our state association. So when the mic gets passed to Mr. Arsenal, we will let him introduce himself. We'll make this simple and easy for all, no pain involved. Well, simply we have multiple mics here on the stage. We'll go along with the court reach and then we'll switch to the next one. If you can simply introduce yourself, where you're at, who you work for, what school, sports you cover. And I guess we can start with myself and we'll end with JD. So those of you who know my name is Aaron McDonald. No one calls me that name, I go by Big A. I'm an administrator for a county parish school board and a working athletic trainer for Lake Charles Memorial Hospital.
Scott, I'm a director of sports at Central High School and very proud president of the LATA. Very, you know, we have several executive board members here. So thank y'all, JD, that you even stood and put this on, I think it's pretty important. Also too, you know, this is a sponsor event by our LATA foundation, we're responsible and we try to sponsor a lot of these events as well as CIN, which is our district organization.
I'm Tommy Dean with concussion solutions and I'm the oversight and management of concussion management at a nearby local area of high schools.
My name is Damian, I'm an athletic trainer at St. Mary Parish. I'm also the LATA secretary, working with Louisiana Athletic Care, I cover, um, others that I have in here.
Elizabeth Thompson, I'm an athletic trainer with Louisiana Athletic Care and coordinator at Mary Parish.
Hello. Emily Ho, I'm the coordinator of St. Mary Parish at Louisiana Athletic Care and I cover a lot of these athletic programs.
I'm Carrie Bertha, I'm the current president of the Latin Louisiana Athletic Trainers Association. I work in New Orleans, fortunately, at our professional athlete care clinic where we take care of former NFL players and other retired athletes. And I appreciate all of you, we're not athletic trainers over here that came to learn a little bit about what we do and then how to improve it across the board for our young people.
Hi, I'm Randy Aldrin, an assistant professor at University of Louisiana, the program director for athletic training there and the director of continuing education for Louisiana Athletic Trainers Association.
Good evening. My name is Scotty Romano, I'm currently the treasurer for Louisiana Athletic Trainers Association. I'm dual credential, not only as an athletic trainer but a physical therapist assistant. I work in multiple settings and currently doing contract employment and I live in Prairieville, Louisiana.
Good afternoon. Chad Arsenal, I'm athletic trainer with Louisiana Athletic Care and I just try to be a utility infielder player for these guys.
Barnan Dago, athletic trainer at Central Physical School, Duckford School Campus in Youngsville. And I also teach human anatomy there.
Steve Zerkus, I'm athletic trainer at Lafayette High and also teach emergency medical responder at Sports Medicine and Health Academy.
Alex Longio with World Sports Care and I'm the athletic trainer out at Probridge Five.
My name is Jeff Faber, I'm an athletic trainer and physical therapist. I work for Kitty on physical therapy. I help cover sporting events for our local high schools in Lafayette and Seymour Parish.
I'm Amy Maddox, I'm the clinical coordinator at UOL Lafayette and I am with NISU covering SUI this year at Seymour Parish.
I'm Brent Woodrow, I'm a teacher and athletic trainer at Washington High School. I'd also like to thank JD for letting me get involved. I'm also on the Epic Council. I work as a teacher during the day under the Louisiana Athletic Care umbrella at St. Laney Parish Schools and I'm proud to say that every high school in St. Laney Parish has a full-time athletic trainer.
My name is Gabriel from the Athletic Training Student at UOL, graduated in 2018. I'm currently doing my clinical rotation with Mr. Steven at Lafayette.
My name is Jack Lewis, I'm an athletic training student at University of Lafayette and I'm currently with MTS and Mr. Peter.
I am Kate Locke, I am a UOL Athletic Training Student, I'll be graduating this year and I'm currently working with the UL Beasley.
Hi, my name is Dorian Aiden-Hawke, I'm currently with UOL Saltwell, I'm an Athletic Training Student at UOL and I am the junior representative on the executive board for LATA.
Hi, I'm Hannah Rouse, I'm also an athletic training student at UOL. I graduated in age 2019, that's one year, and I just finished out my rotation with the World Basketball Team.
Thank you, guys. A great round of applause. I'll let you, we set up a couple of athletic trainers we need to introduce and we'll give So our last two athletic trainers that we need to introduce tonight are the husband and wife duo of Epic and that is Mr. JD Woodrow and his wonderful wife and great athletic trainer, Stephanie Woodrow. Miss Stephanie, are you coming to the stage? You want to just wave and we'll give you a round of applause. All right, Mr. Woodrow, the mic is yours. Let's hear you speak to this great audience.
All right, thank you. I want to spend a few times at the end, let you know what the next step is for this organization. Before I do that, we do have two gift cards to hand out. 25 gift cards to a cabinet. We have one designated for a late audience member, so we drew a name and that person is Laura Geismann. So we drew a name, and that person is Laura Geisman. And we also save one gift card for an athletic trainer. So the athletic trainer that wins this $25 gift card is Lauren Tate.
Do you want to take your gift card? You want to come here? No, I can't. We got to get that.
Uh, we can get it to you. So there's a few people that I would like to thank. So first of all, I want to thank the KIDY Open Channel, they were graciously here tonight taking it. And we will be broadcasting, uh, broadcasting late, uh, throughout the Lafayette region next week. So we'll be putting it out on our Facebook page, uh, so if anybody wasn't able to make it tonight, they'll be able to watch a replay of this event. Also, I want to thank, uh, Louisiana Athletic Trainers Association and the Southeast Athletic Trainers Association. They provided great money for this organization, uh, to allow us to get a lot of our sponsors here, uh, and allow us to put this event on. Also, I want to thank Scott, his executive committee, uh, for stepping forward. Uh, then I want to thank, uh, Game Camp is a nonprofit that has helped us also put on this event. Uh, Mr. Brian Tonier with that has helped us, uh, partner so we can bring this at free, uh, charge and no cost to the community. I also want to bring up the advisory committee members, so you heard a few people, uh, tonight, uh, mentioned it. These are some people that have really supported me throughout the past six or seven months, and we really got to the role. So I want to bring them up, thank you, and recognize this is not a standalone show for me. And I realize that we need to put a good team around this to really make a change in our community. So first, as I call you, maybe you can come on up and you can be recognized, Dr. Stephanie Aldrich, who's a panel member tonight. Dr. Randy Aldrich from the University of Louisiana. Unable to be here tonight is Coach Tony Corbille from Carrot Pro High School. He is a high school coach representative, uh, that brings, uh, expertise in the weight training and coaching field. We have Kevin and Michelle Foote. Michelle's here tonight, and she's been helping us, unfortunately, uh, fortunately, depending on how you look at it. Kevin is covering the UL LSU NIT basketball game. We have an update, that's four, I'm sure somebody in the audience has enough, eight.
Sixty-three, seventy-two, that's a shoot.
Sixty-three, seventy-two, that's a shoot. So I appreciate y'all coming out tonight, because I know there was a big conflict there with that was scheduled. Uh, Tammy Mayo is unable to be here tonight, but she is a school counselor from Carrot Pro High School. Uh, she's also been part of a lot of our meetings. We have Aaron McDonald right here to my left, uh, he's the moderator tonight. We have Mr. Jim Paulson from Lowerville, Louisiana. He is a layman from the community that has been very instrumental in, in helping us get some of our initiatives out. We have Mr. Brent Mudrow. Here he is, a local athletic trainer with Goshen High School, helping us with some of our policies and procedures. We have Brian Tonier from MTS Physical Therapy. And then I would be, be trouble if I didn't mention my wife Stephanie. She comes to, she comes to as many meetings as she can, but I'm grateful to have her as a wife because she allows me to change my passion. So she'll take care of our kids so I can do this, so I thank her a lot. So I want to thank my advisory committee, uh, we meet once a month. Uh, anybody that wants to attend, typically we meet at UL, uh, in the athletic training classroom. It is not a closed group, it's an open group, and we feel like the more people that can involve, uh, if you are interested, I have a card out front, you can email me or call me, uh, very accessible. Where you will also have access to Zoom meetings, which if you cannot attend a meeting in person, you'd like to listen in, you can, uh, listen in and offer input. So we'll have a meeting coming up in April, that'll be posted on our Facebook page, uh, so anybody that is interested can, can like that Facebook page. Lastly, before we wrap up, I want to say where we're going with this whole sports safety. Uh, in 2018, this organization has decided to start awarding what we call the Youth Star Award. And the STAR stands for Safe Train with Appropriate Resources. And this is going to recognize youth leagues, athletic venues and facilities for implementing proper standards of healthcare and safety for your youth athletes. Many of the basic standards that we are requiring are mandated by the state law. So I'm going to ask also the remaining people that aren't up here that want the pants to step back up if you don't mind. Mr. Phillips, um, this Mayo, and this Sanford, and I think that... So I'm just going to go down a line, I'm going to put some of these people on the spot up here because I think we need to start putting some pressure on our community. Um, so the basic standards of this award will require emergency action plans in youth leagues. It will require background checks for our coaches to assure that our, our kids are being, being taught by people in the community and coached by people in the community that have proper backgrounds. It's going to require CPR and AED of all our coaches. It's going to require a sudden cardiac death. It is going to require concussion recognition requirements, which are both required by law. And lastly, the most basic requirement is to have a heat illness policy and a light and safety policy. So those are the six basic standards. We'll also have 12 additional standards if leagues want to achieve an additional standard. And those include pre-participation exams, parent and coach education, equipment certification, medical professional athletic trainer coverage, a tobacco-free policy for your, for your facility or venue, and expectations of sportsmanship and behavior, not only for the athletes, but for the, for the parents and for the, um, audience members that are watching it, so we can, we can do that. So what I want to go down is I want to just go down with a, a simple yes/no question is, these basic standards, emergency action plans, background checks for coaches, CPR, AED requirement for a youth league, sudden cardiac death and concussion education, and weather policy requirements for heat illness and light and safety. I'm going to put these people on the spot. Would you let your own child participate in a league that does not have these basic standards?
No. You? Absolutely not. Oh? No way?
And, uh, and this was not rehearsed, but I've been, I've been in a group with these people for the last six or seven months, so we have put this package together. The great thing about youth leagues is it's very minimal work from their standpoint. A lot of people on this stage has researched the evidence-based protocols. We went to institutes like the Corey Stringer Institute. We went to the best guidelines that we can have. We just need youth leagues to want to be part of it, okay? And it's going to take a, an effort from the community to, to get this done, okay? Because we're, we've met with youth leagues, we've met with administrators, and the constant response is, until the parents or until the athletes tell us it needs to be done, they don't see the need for it to be done, okay? So you'll find out more information about it if you'd like. We have the actual applications for the Star Award out there. We do feel like there are some leagues in our, uh, area already that meet the basic requirements. So if your kid is participating in a league and you feel like they have those basic requirements, please come to us, let us know. Currently right now, this is a free award that we are giving out. We are trying to recognize youth leagues that are doing it right, okay? And, and provide some internal pressure for leagues that are not holding to these basic standards that we discussed tonight, okay? So you'll be seeing more of that come out. It's called the Youth Star Award again, safe, good, and appropriate resources. And many of the people that were up here tonight spoke about those things, sportsmanship, health and safety in our youth athletes. So I want to...
Now that I'm not calling, let me, let me say this. Um, you talking about the safety of the children and the athletes. That's why FCA works so hard as well to get to the coaches. And we want these coaches not to be transactional, but we want them to be transformational coaches. And that's my job, and I really take it seriously. Because if we're trying to get to these coaches that you need to be transformational, that means you're putting the needs of the athlete first. You're not looking at this win-at-all cost mentality, oh, you're hurt, hurry up and get to the trainer, that's my star player, I'm worried about, you know, you and your life, all this stuff is going on, your legs hurt, we need to eat you out there, hurry up, get on the field. We need to get to these coaches and change their mindset and their philosophy and say, look, we want you to care about your athlete. Care about their safety, use wisdom when to inform them when to get back into their sport. So if FCA can do that and just really get to the heart of the coach and get them out of that transactional mode of saying it's all about winning, it's all about getting that athlete back on the field and quickly without, you know, making sure they're really safe, that's our job. And so hopefully we can do that, and we can get to as many coaches as possible so we can have these athletes to remain safe and come back in that timely fashion.
And use any other comments? All right, with that, we'll conclude this event. What I would like to do is invite you to visit some of our tables. We have our Louisiana Athletic Trainers Association, game performance, FCA Fellowship of Christian Athletes, MTS Physical Therapy, and Louisiana Athletic Specials. If somebody mentions something tonight that you are interested in, if you want to find out how can you have an athletic trainer in your youth league, if you want to learn more about FCA, uh, preparing for a competitive season with MTS, or any concussion questions, I know all of these representatives will be here. Uh, also, we'll be out at the front of the Epic table if you have any questions or want to talk about the mission or vision of our company. Uh, but again, I just want to stand here and say, remember, Epic is an acronym, educating the community, protecting our athletes, implementing effective policies, and cultivating collaborative relationships. I think tonight was a big event, uh, and a big step forward in that direction. So I want to thank everybody for attendance, and I want to again, uh, thank our athletic trainers in, in, in attendance for National Athletic Trainers Month. It's great, uh, what all of us do for that profession. A lot of times we go behind the scenes, uh, but I just want to recognize y'all for, for National Athletic Training Month. And I appreciate, uh, everybody attending tonight. Thank you.